All right. Imagine you are in a French Parisian café. The music plays in the background. Okay.
Mr. Margot, I would like to approve. I would like to move to approve the agenda.
I have to do the pledge first, Mr. Spitz, and I was just waiting for the...
Oh, we do?
Yes.
All right.
Mr. Glockman from our Facility Advisory Committee, would you like to lead us in the pledge? Thank you, sir. You may.
I'll second it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Spitz and Mrs. Marcus. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Dr. Bregge, report of closed session.
There was no action in closed session tonight.
Thank you very much. And now we have public comment. Getting to the Bergs as quickly as possible. Liv, you're up.
Hi, my name is Liv Berg. I'm a 12th grader here at Beverly, and I've been in the district since kindergarten. I was lucky enough to have Ms. Chan as a teacher for both elementary and middle school. Because of her, I've been able to participate in different conferences and trips that have enriched my experience with music. I'll never forget the times I've spent at OAKE festivals with my friends and Ms. Chan. I do feel that having her as a middle school teacher was especially beneficial, as she's the reason I wanted to continue choir in the high school. Ms. Chan's middle school choir accomplished a lot: many festivals, recent trips to New York and Rome where it performed in the Vatican, and I feel that her presence there is imperative. We can all agree that the middle school is an interesting time for all of us. Getting to go to Ms. Chan's classes every day of those three years made my day very much more enjoyable. I still talk about it all the time with my best friends that were in her class with me. We have such good memories of going to Disneyland and Universal Studios and heritage festivals all around the state. This experience gave me so much and is the reason I joined choir in high school. I've been a magical singer since my sophomore year, and a lot of that is because of Ms. Chan. As a senior now, I'm now leader of my choir section and vice president of the program. If I didn't have Ms. Chan as a teacher in middle school, I wouldn't have joined choir in high school and therefore wouldn't have discovered my own talents and passions. I owe that to her class. Thank you.
Um, Aerith?
It's a nice act to follow, because Liv is my daughter. So thank you for the opportunity of addressing the board and the school administration. My name is Dr. Irree Jaffey Berg. I'm a parent of a high schooler and also a BV middle schooler, and I'm a graduate of Horace Mann and Beverly Hills High School myself. I'm here to also lend my support to Ms. Chan and to the choral program in the elementary and in the middle school as well as the high school. Let me begin by pointing out that Ms. Chan is a longtime teacher in our district who, over the last 18 years here, has developed a star program that is the envy of many parents and students in other districts, including private schools. In her program, students learn the foundations and advanced skills in sight-reading, music theory, elements of performance, as well as the knowledge of contemporary and classical world music. Her students learn to sing in various languages, and they gauge their own progress in various regional and national festivals. This prepares them for the study of music in the high school, as Liv has said, and beyond. It also reinforces their learning in STEM and other humanities fields, as so many scientific studies of music education have shown. In her program, Ms. Chan put our school district quite literally on the local, national, and even international map. By taking students to the annual Southern California Music Heritage Festival where our choral program often scored gold and high marks; by taking our students to the nationwide OAKE music festivals in Ohio, Connecticut, Atlanta, to name just a few places; by taking our middle school choir to the Vatican and Rome; to Florence and Carnegie Hall in York over the past few years. Who knows where Ms. Chan would have taken our middle school choir next? Who knows where the Beverly Hills School District's name would have gone? While doing so much... Oops! While doing so much to promote our students' learning and taking our district to other places, Ms. Chan has also modeled the importance of always giving back with performances that were performed locally, including charitable projects, and by fundraising for others. This is a star teacher, an Apple Award-winning teacher, and her programmatic vision and her aspirations for her students and for the choral program entire in our district should be fully supported. Thank you.
Thank you. Haley?
Hello, school board. My name is Haley, and I was a student in Ms. Chan's choir. There are over 100 reasons why Ms. Chan should stay in the middle school, but I want to focus on one. Ms. Chan did not just teach us music, but she taught us songs in English, Hebrew, Latin, Italian, German, and Chinese, and much more. This alone is enough a reason to keep her. That's all.
Thank you. Frank, do you want to follow your daughter, or should I buffer you? Okay. Ben?
Hi. Ben Tierney. I have two daughters in the district.
Uh, benefit though.
And a phone that has decided not to turn on. All right, here we go. I've written a letter. I think some of you have seen it. It's been signed by a lot of the parents who love for children, who love to sing. I'll skip the first half of it, because it's establishing that Ms. Chan is good. I think we've done that. The second part says, "This level of extraordinary achievement, creativity, and dedication are above and beyond any job description. And by removing Ms. Chan from the middle school, the BHUSD has chosen to trade away multiple once-in-a-lifetime opportunities for children whose education and enrichment is responsible for. We request that Ms. Chan be provided with the platform and all resources necessary to continue her amazing work with the middle school students." Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Frank?
Do you mind if some of the other folks go, like Dr. Galen?
Not at all. Okay. Dr. Galen, yeah. It's just, it's given to me in a stack, and I just go through it, so. I'm not playing favorites.
I believe...
Yes, Luke, six minutes, please.
I'll try and be shorter than that. Yes, absolutely. Hi, my name is Steve Galen. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak with you today. I've been a resident of Beverly Hills for over 50 years. I'm a proud graduate of the school system, heading to Ten Hawthorne and the high school, and I've had three kids in the school system, one who just graduated the high school, and I have two stepchildren who are also at Beverly Vista, well, one's at Beverly Vista, one's at the high school right now. Clearly, the emails, letters, and the attendance here are all a testament to the remarkable abilities and achievements that Mrs. Chan has brought to our district. All this is true. I'm trying my best not to reiterate the obvious of what everyone else has to say here today. Yes, Mrs. Chan is a remarkable educator that has shown us a dedication to our students that is unparalleled in both magnitude and success. It's blatantly obvious. Mrs. Chan, where are you, Mrs. Chan? I thank you for what you did for my daughter, her classmates, and our city. The time allotted to me tonight is insufficient to address my true appreciation. So I'm going to reluctantly move on. While some may disagree, the development of a middle school has been long overdue. Sure, with the incredibly audacious and monumental task of restructuring our schools, sacrifices will have to be made, and not everyone will be happy. Of course, there has been, and there will be, many oversights and mistakes as we work through our growing pains. That is understandable, and patience must be encouraged. I want to share with you my experience from when I was chief of staff at Cedars a few years ago. Cedars has a unique philosophy. Our goal is not to be good. It's not to be great, but it's to excel beyond the highest expectations possible. We strive to be the absolute best, and it's because of this attitude that we have been ranked the eighth greatest hospital in this country. So I ask, isn't that the exact attitude that we should have for our schools in Beverly Hills? Of course, the answer is yes, and that is exactly why we are here today. We are trying to comprehend what is the true definition of a head-scratcher. We do not achieve excellence by taking what is arguably the single greatest program that we have in our entire district and throwing it away. Yes, Mrs. Chan does a wonderful job with our grammar school children, but have you not seen what she's accomplished with the middle school? As others have said, we've gone to OAKE. Our middle school was sent to perform in Carnegie Hall. Is our middle school program that's transported overseas to perform in Rome. Now, in Rome, we were invited to sing in the Sistine Chapel. We were told we're only going to be allowed to sing one or two songs. Well, we were so good that the guard in the Vatican refused to allow Mrs. Chan to stop and had our choir sing every single song in their repertoire. It was unheard of. So yes, there will be mistakes made during this transformation, but there is not a soul in this room, nor in the city, who can tell me with a straight face that ceramics, photography, and perhaps a multitude of other electives, no matter how interesting they may be, they can justify removing a middle school choir that is top in the nation. After all, isn't this the selling point of developing a middle school to prepare our kids for high school? Can anyone here think of another elective that could possibly give our kids a bigger magnitude of cultural experience than this remarkable choir? I challenge you. Find one. So I beg of the school board and the school district not to destroy that which sets Beverly Hills apart from all other cities. Mrs. Chan should not be moved to Horace Mann, nor anywhere else. Yes, canceling current electives, rearranging classrooms and teachers to restore this gift that we have poses a difficult task and work and expense. Regardless, it is our responsibility as a community to fix this. Please, restore our school district's greatest asset and put Mrs. Chan back where she belongs. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank, you ready yet?
I want to hear from some of the other folks, actually.
Okay. All right.
They're doing better than I could.
Okay. Summer?
Hello. My name's Summer Jansen, and I won't be quite so eloquent as some of the other people who have gone before me. I'm a parent here in the district, and my daughter Tyler Jansen is going to speak tonight as well with some of her friends. She was in the choir and directly impacted by some of the changes that were made. I work in human resources, and we focus on developmental organization. So I understand that when changes have to be made, that there are choices that have to be made along with that that will both positively and sometimes adversely impact the people who are involved in it. I've had it before where we had to close down an entire hotel. We didn't have a choice. Our financial backing said, "This is what we're doing. We're reopening, and we have to reposition many things." And with that, we sometimes communicated things in a manner that affected people adversely. And we didn't know that that was going to be the impact when it first happened, but as we listened to the people in the hotel and the people that it affected, we had to take those things into consideration. We had to get better at what we were doing and how we communicated the changes that we made, and we had to factor in the things that adversely impacted the community that it was affecting. So I think that you guys have been put in a similar situation where you maybe had to make some changes. We had to reorganize the district, and I want to say thank you for everything that you guys have done on a positive perspective that has changed that for all the kids in the district. I think that I'm here in support of Ms. Chan, but also for Mr. Smith. I think they've both been put in a precarious situation, and I would just ask that as we grow as a community and we have to make these changes that lend toward progress, that we would be better in the manner in which we communicate that to the people who are affected, and that when they are adversely affected, that we also take that into consideration. It's also impacted our children in the sense that had they known something earlier, they may have been able to make other choices as to the electives that they signed up for. My daughter, for example, and a couple of her friends, she's in creative writing and photography, which are fun classes and they're great, but she's been doing music and she loves it for a really long time. And in the very last year where she should have been getting polished to go on to the next step and prepare her for a bigger-picture college and the real world, she's having to go into creative writing and photography. So I would ask that we learn to communicate better and that we allow an organic process as we make these changes and go through the reorganization. Thank you.
Thank you. And on that note, I will call up Scarlett and Tyler and Batia. Luke, can you give them nine minutes?
Hi, I'm Batia.
I'm Tyler.
And I'm Scarlett.
We were all students of Ms. Chan for about five years since third grade until this year. A controversial topic that has been widely discussed throughout the beginning of this school year is whether Ms. Chan or not chose to move to Horace Mann. I, all of Ms. Chan's students, and especially Ms. Chan herself, know that moving to Horace Mann was something that she dreaded herself having to do. I remember Ms. Chan telling us after classes how much she didn't want to move to another school. I know that I didn't want Ms. Chan to leave the school, and neither did any other of her students. We discovered that Ms. Chan didn't actually have to move to Horace Mann when we were thrilled, and we...
Later that summer, when I found out that Ms. Chan actually was moving to Horace Mann and wouldn't be our teacher anymore, I was devastated. I cried that night because one of my favorite teachers, whom I have had since third grade, was leaving the school. Ms. Chan has been such an excellent teacher to all of her students, and I am so glad that I had the chance to be taught by her. And I and many of the other students that were previously in her class wish that she could come back to our school.
Ms. Chan is honestly one of the best teachers I've ever had, and not only that, but a great friend. Ms. Chan would say in her class that we are family, and honestly, I felt like that. Batia personally couldn't hit the high notes, and she asked for help, and Ms. Chan helped her before class and after class for about two weeks. She helped her on her free time. I really admire Ms. Chan's kindness to everyone. She teaches, and that's why it was so hard for me and all the choir students to adapt to a new teacher.
I will always remember when we sang solos in choir for our spring concert. My partner and I were having issues singing some of the notes in our song. I remember Ms. Chan staying after school for hours to help us get the notes right. The day of the actual concert, Ms. Chan helped all of her students calm down, even though we were so nervous, some of us were almost shaking.
Ms. Chan and Mr. Smith had no say in this change. The district just slated on them without prior notice. Not only did they not notify the teachers before summer ended, they also didn't tell the students who grew up with Ms. Chan as their one and only music teacher. This added more stress to the people who wanted Ms. Chan as their teacher, because they were left with a smaller amount of options for elective change.
I know it seems bad not to give the new teacher a chance, but you need to understand that we are a family, and I don't want to say goodbye just yet. She has led her choir to victory in several gold-scoring trophies. She has impacted our lives positively ever since third grade, meaning five years. Ms. Chan is creative, sweet, generous, and understanding. She goes above and beyond. I don't see Ms. Chan as just my teacher, but as a role model and my idol.
Thank you.
Thank you. Frank, last call.
I promised you we'd be back. Two weeks ago, I came here. It was a day after. I'd learned of the decision around Ms. Chan, and, you know, I've talked to a lot of people. I cried in front of this board two weeks ago because I was so devastated and just emotional. Now, I got to be honest, I'm more upset and angry for a couple of things. So there's a couple of things that I've learned over the last couple of weeks. I've talked with a lot of you, and my understanding is the decision was made by people in this room, right? I talked to Mr. Allen about this decision, and he explained that this was an administration decision. This was not made at the middle school level. So we're coming back here because these are the decision-makers, right? And we don't know where else to go. So, yeah. Great. Awesome. So three things I want to highlight. First, the facts of the situation as I understand them. I wrote that this was a fiasco. My wife suggested that I make it thoughtless, improperly executed, to be more rational, so we'll go with that. Ms. Chan wanted to be at the Beverly Hills Middle School, not because of some whim, but because she knew that's where she could have the maximum impact. That's the group that went to Carnegie Hall. That's the group that went to Rome. My daughter was handed a schedule a week before school started that said Ms. Chan was the teacher. The first day of school, she walks in and she finds out that Ms. Chan is not the teacher. So as far as I understand, back in May, Ms. Chan made it clear that she wanted to be the middle school teacher. It was clear that there was low enrollment and that there was going to be a rotating schedule, so this would be challenging, but she offered several suggestions on how to solve for this and did not necessarily hear back, just said, "Hey, we're going to work on it." So her understanding was that she was going to be the Beverly Hills middle school teacher. And based on the schedule, I don't have a reason to believe why she wouldn't think that. So the low enrollment and some of those other issues were known back in May, and there were solutions put on the table back then. She then went and worked this summer. Worked to perform at the Sistine Chapel. Worked to perform at St. Peter's Basilica. Meanwhile, she comes back, and a week before school, she's given a non-choice choice. She's offered the opportunity to teach the first, third, and fifth period in the middle school, where there's a rotating schedule, and then she's supposed to work part-time at Horace Mann. If there's a rotating schedule at one school and there's a fixed schedule on the other, there is no logistical way, it does not take a math major, which I am, to figure out that that's impossible. And she was given 24 hours to make a decision. And so she did. So, Dr. Bregge, you noted in your email to me that I can assure you that the assignment of Ms. Chan and Mr. Smith were not the result of a punitive decision? It's very interesting that you wrote that, because I never mentioned that it was a punitive decision. The fact that you had to defend it that way just shows how ineptly this was handled. I have a couple of other points here, and if you guys would like me to continue for two more minutes, I'm happy to give them. If you don't, that's fine. I'm happy to talk with you afterwards. I know I've talked to some of you already, but the solution-makers are here in this room. Fix the issue. How many people are here for Ms. Chan? We're the nerds. We're the choir nerds. We're not the rabble-rousers. We're not the troublemakers, but this is a cherished commodity that you've tossed to the side.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Chan? Luke, there's nine minutes on us, okay?
Did you get the notes about... I have two colleagues...
Yeah, you have nine minutes.
...you have nine minutes. Okay. All right. So I guess you know what I'm here to talk about. I don't have to start with that. The district informed me that my workload at BV will not be full-time on August the 5th, one week before school started. And therefore, I was given two choices: one, to transfer to Horace Mann full-time, and the other is to work 60% at BV and 40% at Horace Mann. Now, I was not actually given a schedule in that meeting. There was nothing in front of me to show me, "You can do this and travel." So I actually then make a schedule myself. This is a schedule. There's no way I can do the traveling even if I want to. The circles-dots are the only five classes that I could possibly cover in Horace Mann if I would do the traveling, which would not be 40% enough for out of 29 classes. So, Mr. Smith and I were like looking at each other like, "What do we do? This really doesn't work. He needs a part-time job. We know that because he's a union president." And it was Monday, and all we were worried is like, "Oh, my gosh, we have to move our classroom. Next week is school. What do we do?" We really didn't have much time to think. We kind of slept on it, and really, out of the two choices, I have to move, because he needs a part-time job, I need a full-time job, and so we moved. So while I fully cooperated with the district and moved out of BV on Wednesday, in one day, it's not true when people say Ms. Chan has chosen to transfer to Horace Mann. There wasn't a third option for me to go with, and this option does not work. And the transfer also has nothing to do with any last-minute changes in staffing needs. We know he is the union president. He was the union president last year. He was getting a 6/5 pay in order to cover his teaching duties and union duties. So I don't know why that option was not on our table. There's also no change in student enrollment. We know since March, there are about maybe 50 to 60 kids who chose a choir elective. The choir program is always small in our district. We don't have a choral program in the KDA schools. So I knew it was small since the get-go. And so I made it very clear in my letter of intent, knowing my seniority, when we are asked to choose what school we want to go to, I made it very clear that I want to stay at BV. But I also know it may not be a full-time job, so my second choice is like, "Make me travel." I would teach some classes in BV and teach some classes in Horace Mann. In fact, on May the 24th, when I received the final middle school schedules, I immediately saw that there are five classes of choir, and the administration split them all up, so each class will only have four kids, 10 kids, 12 kids. So I immediately wrote another proposal and sent it to the administration and say, "I have some ideas of how to solve this problem. If we could just divide the 60 kids into two classes, one advanced group, one beginning group, I would have ample time to travel to Horace Mann." No one has followed up with me on my proposal. I received one email from the FAPA coordinator thanking me for the ideas, and then I haven't heard back from the district until August the 5th. So I really had a hard time to understand why and how this transfer happened, five business days before school started. I started to think about other possible reasons, things that I don't really feel comfortable to say. You know, I spent Sunday, August the 4th, to unpack all my boxes, and then I packed them all again two days later. You know, the district really could not have sent me a little quick tip, maybe like one more week before, and say, "Hold off till you unpack it, Ms. Chan. We might have to move you again after you move out of the original choral room at BV." I felt very disrespected in this process, and I don't think I deserve to be treated this way. Two choices on the table, but one really wasn't a choice, five business days. So why? The timing of this transfer could not be worse. The middle school, as you see, we just had this great trip. You know, why would a school suddenly just move a teacher out after such a major accomplishment? And this change had put me, and also I feel really... and also I feel really, really bad for Ethan and the students and the parents in the most awkward, unfair, and stressful circumstances. We have kids crying the first day of school. It's ridiculous. And all of this could have been completely avoided if somebody would look at my proposal and say, let's sit down and talk about this in the summer. The music teachers did not have one single meeting with the administration in the entire process of reconfiguration. By the way, we are 100% on board. We were actually excited to have a middle school. All communications were done by email only. We were asked to write proposals, course outlines, dream programs. And then the only thing that we ever heard is like, thank you for sharing. We'll keep you posted. Decisions were made left and right from the top. We have no choice but to just follow these decisions, even we know as music educators that some of them are not good decisions and not how we should teach our children. And it is this kind of extreme dysfunction, not to mention the disrespect that has music teachers willing to take pay cuts to leave our district. We lost two very outstanding music educators since May, not because they need to relocate or they got a promotion. They took a pay cut to go somewhere. My purpose here tonight is not to ask for my job back at BV, but to inform the school board of what has gone on. Most importantly, I really hope that the district and site administration will start listening to the teachers, particularly in terms of how instruction should be delivered in the subject area we're specialized in. We need to stop communicating by email only and have some face-to-face real meetings and discussion on solution. Ethan and I will do the best job we can in our new schools. But there are lots of issues that we need to address, in particular related to choral music. My choral team would like to request a meeting with the administration to talk about how we will move forward and hopefully get the support we desperately need to maintain the program in our school. Our students deserve the best. You have the best teachers here. Please help us to get our job done. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ethan?
Six minutes, please. Well, this is awkward, but here we go. Good evening. Their year of reconfiguration is underway and everyone is wondering how is it going? I must say for me personally, I was also surprised being involuntarily transferred to the middle school at the last minute. And I know you've already had an earful from the parents here and Ms. Chan spoke about it. So instead, I'm going to report on a couple of other things that have been brought to my attention from around the district. SchoolG. The transition is proving difficult to navigate. My sense is that the TK through five schools are just now learning it and that the most challenges are occurring at the high school. With the new buildings and a push for new technology at the elementary schools, most of the training has been focused there. One-to-one devices are not yet readily available at the high school. And as I understand it, since Google Apps for Education are not universally used at the high school, teachers are having more issues using SchoolG to communicate with parents. This morning, I forwarded on a list of eight different glitches with SchoolG that I've collected. I sent them to Bernadette Lucas, and I appreciate her being open to hearing the issues as they are arising across the issues. Thank you for your email this morning. I've spoken to Mr. Meade about how to help teachers learn SchoolG more readily. And he has said he will be using as many contractual minutes as he can for training. He is also making non-contractual trainings available. But neither the board nor the administration should expect faculty to volunteer their personal time to learn SchoolG. There's been pushback from faculty on SchoolG due to the fact that the first high school in-service of the year for it came the same day the district sent an email, which stated that two to two-and-a-half hours of mandatory online training for keen and safe schools was also now due. We do these trainings every year, and every year I hear the same question. Why doesn't the district announce devoted contractual minutes to this task at the same time the training is being announced? I complained at the training over the weekend, and it did take me every part of two hours to do all the training. Finally, class size is rapidly becoming an issue. You may be aware that we've added a significant number of students over the summer. Class sizes at Horace Mann and Hawthorne are now close to 30 in grades four and five and significantly over the ideal ratio of 21 in the TK through threes. And my understanding is that as of today, student services are now allowing families to shift between Horace Mann and Hawthorne. That can't do anything but further destabilize things. Parents expect personalized attention at Beverly Hills. And the district wants cooperative, collaborative learning. But all of this is made much more difficult when there's hardly enough room to turn around. I ask the board to make reducing class sizes a priority as you go forward. So how's reconfiguration going? Well, it depends on who and... I said who. I meant where you are. If you teach at one of the TK fives, you'd probably say crowded. But I know Mr. Bugby and Mrs. Caver have been working overtime to create positive learning environments. At BV Middle School, I must say I'm amazed at how well things are up and running there already. It's a testament to Mr. Allen and his team. But it's also a testament to the professionalism, the dedication of teachers there. And as I've said here tonight, there are issues and tensions at the high school. I've spoken to Mr. Meade about these, and I'm also taking input from the teachers there who are honestly frustrated with how the year has begun. Ultimately, however, I think that all this communication will be the key to the reconfiguration success. I addressed this board earlier in the summer, and I said, I'm here to work for BHEA, but I'm also here to work with you. The same is true for the administration. We will all be more successful if we keep the lines of communication open, respond to emails, and keep our attention focused on the most important thing in all of this, the students of Beverly Hills. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy Bell. Thank you for being patient.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Dear board members, my name is Amy Bell. I live in the district with my husband Greg, who most of you know, and currently have two kids in the district, one at the high school and one at Horace Mann. My oldest daughter just graduated the high school and now attends the University of Arizona. My 15-year-old daughter is in special education here at the high school. For the past several years, I have worked in the district as an aide for special education students. I was very disappointed to hear that Anna Walker recently resigned from the Special Education Department. Anna was not only good at her job, but she was also in charge of the Special Education Work Program that allows special-needs kids to get placed in jobs through the district once they turn 16. My daughter will be 16 in November, and she is eager to start work and to get a job through this program. The program offers kids with special needs a tremendous opportunity to gain much-needed self-confidence and to interact with the public and to develop job and vocational skills. This type of training and community involvement is oftentimes fleeting for special-needs kids. The fact that you have this program is monumental and cannot be understated. We were extremely excited to hear about this program, and it is and will continue to be a part of our daughter's future at Beverly. With Anna's loss, we need to know that someone in the department will champion this program this year. I ask that you absolutely commit to continuing this program for as long as possible and confirm that someone at the high school will replace Anna at least as far as this program is concerned so that my daughter and other daughters like her can get to work. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Kraus, how are any more cards? Okay. Thank you very much. That ends our agenda hearing period. Moving on to staff presentations. Casey Rowley with an update on the College Center.
Thank you. All set? Ready? Okay. My name is Casey Rowley, and I'm the college counselor here at Beverly Hills High School. The purpose of my presentation tonight is to provide a landscape of our college counseling curriculum, an update on college application trends at Beverly, and to highlight our programming and future growth. As we fine-tune our center to better meet the needs of our students and prepare Beverly to remain strong in college counseling trends, my hope is to continue highlighting our students and marketing our school to four-year institutions nationally and globally. Our college center serves grades nine through 12 students and parents through comprehensive, age-appropriate curriculum and engagement allowing students to explore and plan post-secondary goals in identifying careers, majors, and fit within colleges and universities. Our curriculum is delivered through Naviance, small and large group classroom presentation, workshops, evening events tailored towards each grade level, and staff education. In order to widen our reach, we offer targeted programming campus-wide to our staff. We have and will continue to have letters of recommendation workshops tailored for teachers and counselors, college admission testing trends, PD for counselors. And with the onset of the official SAT School Day, last year, we implemented a school-wide PD on college admission testing and supported AP curriculum with our college readiness grant last year. The college center and counseling department implements Naviance programming to foster a self-discovering environment with the Myers-Briggs Do What You Are for freshman year, creating four-year plans with their counselors and an introduction to post-secondary options in collaboration with the counselors. Throughout the sophomore year, we build upon self-discovery, identifying strengths, and exploring careers, ultimately connecting to majors. Sophomores will also take the PSAT in the spring, adding another semester of curriculum under their belt. And we provide a PSAT Strategies Workshop for those students as well as a college admission testing presentation. Junior year, we're connecting discovery and exploration to college options, diving more in-depth to post-secondary options, college admission testing, and the college application process. Juniors complete a game plan survey in Naviance, take the PSAT in the fall, the official School Day SAT in the spring, and participate in classroom and evening presentations to help create concrete post-secondary goals heading into their senior year. Over this past summer, we implemented a brand-new online program where all rising seniors had access to an online essay and application support free for them. And we'll continue to do that for the class of 21 or 20, 21, and collect data throughout the next two years. As seniors finalize post-secondary plans, we walk them through the college application process with Naviance, individual meetings, application workshops, including individual essay review sessions, and connect students directly to college admission counselors, graduating with a clear post-secondary plan and an exit survey. A key component to our center is driven by building and maintaining relationships with admission representatives from colleges and universities. Our relationships provide us the advantage to market our Beverly students, help colleges gain a better understanding of our curriculum and our high school landscape for stronger chances of admission and to stay abreast of admission trends. I am a member of the University of Chicago California Council Advisory Board, and I'm the only public high school counselor on that board, which has created access for our rising juniors to attend a selective U-Chicago summer program, and that will continue for us in the years to come. I'm also a member of the Princeton Review National Advisory Board. I participate, volunteer, and present at national and local admission conferences, including the National Association for College Admission Counseling. We give access to over 100 colleges and universities at individual college visits at Beverly and have grown that number each year. We hosted over 20 new colleges last year alone. In the year 2017 and 2018, we piloted college field trips, taking sophomores and juniors to college campuses, including Loyola Marymount, UCLA, and Fidham. Within application trends, we have seen an increase in acceptances to UC schools within our Beverly seniors. Nationally, there has also been an increase in early applications, 4% increase in early decision nationwide and 7% increase for early action. And it has been reflected here on campus with our seniors as well. So students are preparing and applying earlier and are also increasing the diversity of where they're applying. We have increased our out-of-state and international applications, which subsequently increases our reach and admissions globally. Class of 2017 saw 194 variations of out-of-state and international institutions. And in the class of 2018, we've grown to 218. So we're diversifying where our students are applying. As we progress in our programming, we look to the roles within our center. Currently, one administrative assistant supports both the college center and career program. Our administrative assistants' roles have expanded with the growth of CTE pathways and AP coordinating. In the 2017-2018 school year, I also took on the responsibility as scholarship coordinator of senior awards and scholarships. More administrative support allocated to the college center would provide the ability to expand more time on recruiting and hosting more colleges, working with younger grade levels more individually, and assisting with scholarships and financial aid. 83% of our students received scores of three or higher in 2019 on their AP scores, which is up from 6% from 2015. We look towards increasing our capacity to recognize these students and their achievements as they continue to gain recognition in their scores, scholarship, competition, and awards as we prepare them for college and recognition. The college center continues to serve and grow the needs of our families and as we continue to offer quality programming to all students and implement consistent Naviance curriculum for post-secondary planning. According to the National Association for College Admission Counseling, only 33% of public high schools have a designated college counselor. We continue to pave the way for college counseling and curriculum at a high level, specifically within the public high school setting. But we also look forward to continuing to prepare and fine-tune our programming as we grow and expand each year as we prepare each Beverly family and our school-wide faculty for post-secondary success. I thank you today for your time.
Thank you. Colleagues, any questions or comments?
Yeah, any questions?
Thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you. That wasn't a question, but I'll take that.
I think this is a very, very exciting program.
Thank you.[1622.14] Thank you.
Very important point. I was under the impression, I was given the impression, not too many years ago, that Beverly Hills High did not have excellent college relationships.
And that's very disturbing, and I'm assuming now that there has been a degree of improvement.
Yeah.
And I'm delighted to hear that.
Thank you.
And from everything I see of your program, it looks like the beginning to me. It looks like you've got a program that can grow in every area that you've described, and so it's very exciting, and I thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your support.
Well, I thought it was a great presentation, and I'm really thrilled to see the colleges. When the colleges come to the school, you have something coming, I don't think you mentioned it tomorrow night, as I recall. What is it?
We do. We have a senior kickoff to college, so that's a presentation for students and parents, put on by myself to help give them dates, deadlines, and walk them through requesting letters of rec and four-year admissions. We have a college fair on September 9th, and on that evening, we'll host over 80 colleges and universities throughout from California, nationally, internationally.
I know you get some Big Ten colleges.
We do.
I wonder where the University of Minnesota falls. I've never seen it graduate from.
We've got the pennant, don't worry.
I'm still looking for that little banner up in the room. Students that want to reach out and come to you in this program, how do you get them to come to you, though? I mean, what brings them in?
Yeah.
I mean, it's not like you've got a class of 30 kids. How do you bring them in?
Yeah, it's a really wonderful question. Because we're creating this program on such a large scale, we need to collaborate with our counselors, so it's really working in conjunction with them. So while I will appear and go in and work with students at every grade level, I also include and rely on my counselors to refer students to me as well. So we have an open-door policy as well, so every lunch, our door is open, we invite students in, we have Starburst, Thomas can attest to that. And we really open it up for any student of any grade level to come and ask us questions. So we receive communication from parents beginning ninth grade, and we'll really include their counselor as well in those conversations so that they're getting more support throughout the way.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Mrs. Rowley. Thank you so much for your presentation. I think I'm so pleased that you're here tonight to present because I've been on this board now for almost three years. Or has it been three years already, Mr. Spitz? It has been. And I think this is the first time that we've had a College Center presentation. So your department has never come before us. And I know that you began your journey here with Beverly Hills, what, in 20? Tell me the year.
2016, 2017.
2016. So let me ask you, I'm very pleased to see that the program is growing. I agree with Mr. Spitz in that it seems to me that this is the beginning. And so the question for you tonight from me, and something that I would like for the board, depending on your answer, to think about going forward is, what can we do to increase, you know, our investment in our students? Because this is really, to me, the biggest task that we owe our students, and that is to prepare them and give them a good packaging process so that they can then evacuate and go on to their bigger journey, which is hopefully college or higher education, wherever they decide. So with that question, I don't know from you, what things do you think are needed to make your program stronger?
Yeah, absolutely, and I appreciate the question. I believe when you're implementing a strong college counseling curriculum that can really maximize the individual attention for students, it begins with consistent and streamlined curriculum. Something I'm really looking forward to, and we had a meeting today, is consistent Naviance curriculum, beginning from the middle school, that's streamlined throughout the high school, and then it's echoed through not just the College Center office, but the counseling offices as well. We can't look at this as a one-woman show, right? This is a whole buy-in here from staff and counseling and curriculum. And so what I'm excited and looking forward to is with the middle school and our consistent Naviance implementation, I think that's going to be a really strong point for us. I think in the presentation, I alluded to our roles within our center. As our career programing grows and our College Center grows, our capacity might not grow like octopus arms. So in terms of a level of support within the office to do the backend work and calling and getting the schools there that really alleviate, you know, we have a college coming in, and I'm able to meet individually with a student and then jump into that next room and catch back up with the college to where, not cloning myself essentially, but allowing for some more designated administrative support, I think that would be the biggest immediate need. But in terms of what's coming down the pipeline, I've got to tell you guys, I'm really excited about this Naviance curriculum and just streamlining our counseling team within the College Center. I think it's a couple.
Dustin, do you want to jump in or say anything? Because I would imagine you would.
And I think Casey did a really great job of articulating the needs that we have started to identify. And I do thank Casey, because it has pretty much been, she said, a one-personnel show for the last couple of years. And so like Casey alluded to, even just this morning, we sat in a two-and-a-half-hour meeting with the other counselors of really diving into what are our needs around Naviance, and how can we implement it fully from the ninth through 12th grade, and we got a lot of great buy-in. But again, when you look at just the College and Career Center itself, you have two different divisions sitting in there. You have the Career Technical Education Department that sits inside there alongside the post-secondary options as well, with one person to support both programs. So as we increase our CTE courses, meaning we have more and more pathways coming from sixth grade into 12th grade academically, more funding coming federally for our different CTE grants, in addition to increase college exposure and increase in AP, we're having more and more of our students take advanced placement courses. Registration for advanced placement has changed, so we have Michelle Redston, who is trying to support both Cindy Dubin and Casey Rowley in that venue. And so I think at this point, we've now gotten to the point where we've grown, and we continue to grow, and continue to put more curriculum and instruction inside that space. We're at a place where we're kind of busting. Either we're at capacity and we're okay with status quo, or as we want to grow and blow the roof off the top, we're going to probably have to look at additional set of hands inside there to be able to support. While Casey can do individual meetings and meet with college counselors, we need somebody just to be able to, when Thomas stops in and has a question about application, he needs to answer quickly. Someone that can understand the logistical piece to support just the quick yes and no answers, while you wouldn't have to then wait for Casey's specific question. Does that make sense a little bit? So I think that that's something that hopefully Casey and I can really streamline and maybe come back to the Board of Education with possibly a proposal in the future of exactly what does this look like and exactly what would it mean for us, and how does that impact us financially, too?
Yeah, and I believe it was, Mr. Margot, maybe you can answer this question. Before Mrs. Rowley arrived, I think it was, what year was it when we actually, the district actually started?
2014.
2014, correct. So it really has been some time since we've invested in that program. And I know that just recently, over the winter break, I was invited to meet a friend who, nothing related to the school, but I was at a, she asked me to meet her at the College Center at her school, and so I was shocked to see how many staff members were there, helping their seniors at the time with the application process. And so that kind of a culture isn't, I think, something that we can do right now, just based on the sheer numbers and the staffing. So I think that it's really something that we should look at. I'm sure you're more familiar with models of what takes place in college centers that are really equipped to handle the caseload of students that are coming through, not just the seniors, it's the juniors and it's the freshmen also, and even the eighth graders now with the reconfiguration, to really start to have, tap into those conversations of, you know, what does your future look like, and let's start to plan. I don't think that has really taken place in the past. So yes, please do. I, as one board member, I'd be very interested in seeing what kind of support you need, Dustin, Mrs. Rowley, you know, to come back to us, and hopefully, you know, a study session or I think it's well-called for at this point. So I would encourage you to come back with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, colleagues. I was, not to sound hoity, but I was listening to a Malcolm Gladwell podcast today.
It's always a good start.
Yeah, I know. I shot myself in the foot right off the bat there. And he was discussing higher education, and it was a springboard of a conversation he was having dealing with law school. But he came up with the grand unified theory of higher education, which included all colleges, and that is, don't ask, don't tell. His theory is that too many times, very qualified people are overlooked because of where they went to school. And their education can be just as good at one particular school than, let's say, at an Ivy League school, and perhaps better, because universities are tailored much better for a student than other universities. And everybody's in a race to get into these top-level colleges, but they may not always be the best colleges for them. And I'm sure you have experienced that multitude of time over the years. People who have started and dropped out because it wasn't for them. It was, they were buying into the name. So his don't ask, don't tell means that employers are not allowed to ask where you went to school, and you're not allowed to tell them on your resume. You can just have a degree, and that should be sufficient enough. And I thought that was fascinating and a very interesting thought, so I wanted to just bring that up, not that it particularly relates to you, but it is.
Well, what's kind of interesting, so I have now expanded to the office off of the College Center, which is really nice because I can have confidential meetings behind a closed door with families. What's interesting about that is while the center has all of our pennants and flags and names everywhere, I've chosen to not have any names or colleges in my office. There's no names, there's no colleges, there's not a poster about college. And the purpose of that is to speak to your point, you know, that the students have so many options, and there's a fit for a student out there, and it, you know, may be a gap year, it may not even be college right away. So, you know, I'm a big proponent of helping our students find the right fit for them, and that does, you know, it takes time for them to figure out what that even means for them, so that's funny. So no pennants in my office, but in the center, we're loud and proud, so.
Thank you very much. Anything else, colleagues? Okay.
I apologize. I also just want to mention how lucky we are to have Ms. Rowley in the College Center. She was named 20 top college counselors to watch by the Princeton Review this past year. And so we are very fortunate to have her here at Beverly Hills to begin with.
Well, the support is greatly appreciated. Thank you. Thank you so much.
That's actually the time to ask for a raise. I've got to teach you how this thing works. Okay, colleagues, moving on to the consent calendar, I have a request to pull one item. If anybody else has any last-minute requests, I will open the floor once again to that. If none, then I will make a motion to approve the consent calendar minus item 9F.
I will second the motion.
Thank you very much. Ms. Marcus, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, consent calendar carries. Let's go to item 9F. Make a motion to approve the college and career access pathways dual enrollment partnership with Santa Monica.
I second the motion.
Thank you very much. And who pulled that?
I pulled it, and I didn't pull it for a question, I pulled it because I wanted.
I wanted to make a comment. On my way in tonight, I wanted to let you know that I bumped into three students who were standing out there, and I said, "What brings you tonight?" And they told me that they were going to this class that's right out in the next room on business law or business finance or something. And they're former students, and they were so excited about it, and I just got a taste of the fact that the kids who are getting high school credit being in a college class on campus, and it was really wonderful to see, and I like to see more of it. I know that I saw one class that didn't quite get the enrollment it needed, but I'm sure that there'll be others that will, and I hope that our students know what a great opportunity this is for them and that they take advantage of it.
Thank you very much. Any other comments on this item? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Dr. Buggie, your report, sir.
So a couple weeks ago, Mr. Margot had mentioned he would like an update for the board on some theater space, and this falls right into where we are with reconfiguration as well as modernization and construction. And I can tell you that there isn't an employee in our school district that isn't in some way or another impacted by the change of modernization or construction or reconfiguration. And one of those groups, and oftentimes, people think that it's just in our kindergarten through fifth grades or elementary and our middle school, but it's also at our high school. And at this point, with the modernization and construction, we have no performance space for our high school students who are already feeling a very compromised experience with some of the limitations here. So it's important that people realize that as a school district, there is a lot of growth that's happening and a lot of change that's happening, and amazing things are happening, but we are being impacted, and our students are being impacted in a number of ways. And it really does take us all to pull together. And so while it's difficult to find the space for our performances, we are doing that with the cooperation of our music and theater teacher. Also, I want to thank Ms. Starkins also for helping and jumping on this. Although I'm going to give you some information so that people can feel comfortable and at ease with the work that's been done. We know that we are a bit challenged because we are working outside of our school district in some cases to have some of our performances. So we're, I just want the board to know, and the cabinet, and people at home to understand that we have a publicity challenge on our hands. And so we want to be able to put out music information, theater information, so that people are aware that these programs are happening, and that we are excited about them, and that we are, we have an opportunity to have even a larger stage as we go through this process. Our dance team has already secured the Wallace, so Ms. Finley was terrific for her one show, which is spectacular, which happens in the third week of January. The theater is a bit of a challenge, because our students not only are in front of the stage, they're also in back of the stage and doing sound and lighting. And oftentimes, when you're working outside of your own organization, you don't have those same opportunities to work the sound and the lights, and so that is somewhat challenging. So for the fall show, and I want to thank Ms. Chandler for her cooperation and her flexibility with her programming, we're going to have the fall show at Horace Mann, and that is November 2nd through 17th is when we're going to be doing all of the rehearsals and in actual the show. We have booked that, and this is an opportunity for our students to be able to have full access to the lights and the soundboard, and can be onsite at one of our schools. We know that that doesn't work for all of our shows, and so we have been really creative. Looking at Broadway Night is an event that Ms. Chandler has every year, and we've already booked that. That will be at the Saban. We'll put all these dates out to you, but these are booked opportunities. The theater for the high school, we have booked the Saban to have our musical at the Saban, and we're very excited about that. The Saban has, they've been great partners for us, and so we know that they will also be able to provide opportunities for our kids to learn a little bit about what happens in the professional environment of a theater. Also, for the theater, we have, let's see, I think that's it for the theater. For band and orchestra, we've been working with Mr. Bradbury, and we have the Fall Orchestra Concert Set, and that will be at Roxbury Park. We also have the Winter Orchestra Concert happening at Roxbury Park. They've been very good to us, and it's a space that Mr. Bradbury feels like would be a good setting for his band and orchestra. And so the Winter Band Concert and also the Spring Band Concert will also be, well, one will be, the Winter Band Concert will be at Roxbury Park. The Spring Concert is a little bit bigger, so we're going to have that at the Saban, where he has been before, and the Spring Orchestra Concert will also be at the Saban. For vocal music, we're working on this. In fact, even as of today, we're working with our new vocal music teacher, Mr. Turnblom, and so he is working with us to find places. Temple Emanuel has been used before, so we're in conversation with them, and we'll have those dates set for you at the next meeting. But every show that has been done before that the directors want to do again, we have found a home for, and we just have a few last-minute details to book. And most importantly, because this is all happening so quickly, we're going to be starting on the following year's events and getting that done now instead of waiting. So we've taken a big jump in finding the space. It's been a challenge, but again, it's the flexibility of everyone involved, including our students and our teachers, and we're just so pleased and proud that people are really coming together to see what venue's going to work best, and also which dates, because as you can well imagine, anytime you're planning something of this large scale, it's never when you want it to happen. When you have your own theater, you get to pick your own dates. We're working around other people's schedules, and I just want to give a shout-out to everybody because it's been very successful to get to where we are today. The other thing I wanted to mention is, I know that the board has, there's been a focus on finances, and so one thing that I have communicated with the board and just want to see if there's any further direction, looking at some of our purchases in the district, there's board policy around when you are providing payment for goods and services. We would like to be able to write some protocols and some guidelines around how that's done, credit card purchases, how and when that's done, when that's being used, who can use them, how they're being used, how that information's being part of the asset inventory. And so our finance committee, our longstanding committee with experts in the field of finance, have often asked us for a project. And so they've always said, "We want to be helpful. We want to contribute to the school district." So Mr. Roach and I were talking about how could we incorporate the expertise of people that are outside the educational arena and their expertise in finance, and how could that help us look at our practices and protocols when it comes to finances? And so our thought was that even though we have board policy around payment for goods and services, that we would use the expertise of our finance committee to help come up with some parameters around how and when this type of spending occurs, and then we would bring any recommendation that that team comes up with back to the board for oversight. And I think that this is, they've been longing for this opportunity, and so I just want to share that with the board. And so, I just want to share that with the board and we're very excited to be able to get their input because people outside the organization, we know that they'll have a lot of, you know, a lot of suggestions for us on how to tighten up our controls. Lastly, I just want to, I know that pickup and drop off is, it's been a challenge. Some days, things seem to go well, other days, for some reason or another, there's a hiccup or two. So, we are investigating different ways right now to ensure that we have the appropriate staff that's visible and also actively involved in helping us provide the type of direction that our parents need. And so, it's an ongoing assessment and I certainly don't want people to think that we're fallen into, you know, this is the way that it's gonna be. We consistently want to improve the pickup and drop off at all of our schools. So, I just want everyone to know that that is a very high priority for us, that our kids are safe and that the pickup and drop off is done expeditiously.
Okay, Dr., thank you for the report. I'll allow my colleagues if they have any questions. There's a lot of information. So, we had performing arts dates, finance committee reviewing policy and pickup and drop off. Go.
So, like regarding pickup and drop off, I've heard from many people that staggering the start times, not just the drop off times, might be beneficial. So, that's just something I've heard, so. That's the only comment I have about the report.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Do you have anything?
Yeah, I'm very pleased that the finance committee is being given the opportunity to help out. That's what they're there for. It's an advisory committee. And so, I think that, I expect good results from that.
Me too. Thank you. Ms. Marcus?
Well, first of all, I'm thrilled that the issue of performing arts has been resolved for the most part. I think that, I've heard that amongst the community of where things are going to be and I think that this has been settled for the most part, or almost all for this year, and that you're already starting to think about the next year is really amazing and that's, that you have to look ahead. I'm thrilled with the idea that the finance committee is going to get involved. I know some of the people on there have been asked, "What do they do?" And they sort of felt like it's just a name, but this will really get them active. I'm hoping that in their development of this, that transparency will be very, very much a part of what they're going to do. I look forward to that. And I think that one of the comments about the drop off and the pickup that I heard today, although I know it's still being worked on and everything, but I'd just like to remind people that, people were telling me, they dropped their kids off at 8:00 this morning and there was nobody there at the elementary school. So, you know, getting there just a little bit early, there's someone on the playground, it would relieve that congestion and they should really start to think about that. I know that pickup is a lot different and a lot more difficult, but I'm sure that we're working on it and it will get taken care of. Thank you.
So, on the issue of the theater, performing arts, just a question or a recommendation, are the dates that you read out, read to us, are those going to be made public through an announcement of some sort to the community so that if people aren't watching the meeting today, which most of them don't, there'll be a record for them?
Yes, I mean, we've had some conversations that we have to go above and beyond what we would normally do because so many of the shows are no longer, you know, here at the high school. So, you know, we, there's things that we could do to even, you know, we want to promote all of our programs. So, there's some ads that we can take in the paper that like list where the event is, what it is, and, you know, and do that on a recurring basis. There, you know, one thing that I know is an area that I see of improvement is just even, you know, the businesses, you know, like having posters go up and, you know, in, right in the storefront, like on, you know, Beverly Drive. And there's things that we know that we're going to have to help with the school because the school cannot do it alone. This is a district initiative, all of the modernization. So, we've already had some conversations about how to do that and how to work with, you know, our music teachers and also some of the parents as well.
Right. So, I think that's wonderful and I would just say, if you have, I think you read some dates, I think just for the immediate response for those questions of parents and people in the community who have asked over and over to the board, you know, "What is going on with the performances? Have you secured any venues?" That we can now, at least in the, you know, in the short term, say, come out with some type of a public announcement saying that we, you know, just sharing what we do know right now to be the case, that we have some dates secured. That would be my recommendation, so that we put those questions to rest for the moment. On the issue of the finance committee, I just really want to commend Mr. Roach because I know that when we started this conversation, I met with him and he was very quick to pull out, I think it was three board policies, Mr. Roach, that you pulled, that you were looking at. And so, you know, I just thought that he was just so eager to jump in and really take action and lead the way. And I think it's brilliant that the finance committee is going to be part of this. I agree with Mr. Spitz and with Mrs. Marcus and I look forward to getting something in return so that we can adopt it and approve it and follow it so that there's better systems and controls in this process for the district. As far as traffic, I think that we've had this conversation with the board and with Dr. Bregge, that we are looking to see, you know, it's not just gonna be the issue of traffic, I think. I think there's gonna be a lot of tweaks that we're going to probably have to revisit and touch on maybe next year. Is that correct? As it relates to not just traffic, but lunch area, lunch space, I mean, all the issues that parents have been raising.
Right. We're constantly, you know, everything is in review and, you know, and we're solution-oriented when issues come up, whether it's backpack issues and locker issues and technology issues. Yeah, we're meeting every day to come up with solutions.
Thank you. So, on the theater issues, were, was the theater drama class still using Theater 40 for some performances as well?
Yes.
Okay. So, if a grand schedule comes out and gets published, I want to make sure they're included. Those performances are included. We should put everything, right?
We should.
Because we didn't touch upon those.
Absolutely. Thank you. That's a great, I want to make sure we add those.
You're welcome. And what, you said that the spring musical is actually gonna be at the Saban, which, surprising but great, great venue. What kind of access will the tech students have to staging lights and sound in that theater? Has that been discussed with the theater? As far as I'm working with the staff there?
I know that we're in conversations with them. The Saban has been so great to us. We've really gotten to know them pretty well, so many of us know them on a first-name basis. So, I think they're very excited about our students coming in and even learning at a professional level about what it takes to run a theater that size.
That's great. If it falls that direction, that's terrific that that happened. And then, my last question about these is, has parking been vetted for Roxbury and the Saban for these events? Because it would be an influx of people that they, well, Saban, people who are parents and people who traditionally have attended shows at the Salter don't pay for parking.
Right.
So, it's gonna wind up being a little bit of a new thing. So, I'm wondering how we're gonna handle that and if that's been talked about or will be talked about.
So, yeah, we need to, you know, talk about some of those details, but it's not so new to everyone as, you know, the orchestra band, they've used the Saban in the past.
Right.
So, but we will come up with a plan.
Okay.
And that'll be part of the communication.
Okay, that's great. I'm very pleased to hear about the finance committee stuff and as far as the drop off and pickup and all those things. I appreciate the community's patience in allowing the district to work out these, the nuances of these issues. You know, you planned so much and then you introduced a human factor into your plan and then things have to change. Because, for instance, talking about lunch in the middle school, and that was always a hot topic, a colleague and I went over there today to actually observe lunch as there were requests saying that it's getting really crowded in areas and kids don't have anywhere to eat. And we actually went to campus and saw that a good majority of the students are not eating in the cafeteria, which is why the other areas are crowded. So, if they actually used the cafeteria and ate, it would actually relieve the problem. Why they're not, maybe that's not where the cool kids table is, I don't know, but hopefully they can factor that into the solution on how to get kids back into the place that was designed for them to eat in the first place. So, thank you very much. Thank you, community, and for helping make this reconfiguration a success. We know it's a process that'll take a little bit and we appreciate everyone and staff working through that. Okay, moving on to Mr. Recupero. What say ye?
Yeah, so, I'm very glad that the theater issue has been resolved. That's awesome. I saw all the hard work from Mr. Starkins and Dr. Bregge. I walked in one day and saw them calling all these venues, so thank you for that. Fall sports have kicked off district-wide, from girls volleyball at the high school to flag football at the middle school. Many sports are in action, so that's awesome to see. I also wanted to attest to the College and Career Center, Ms. Redston, Ms. Rowley, Ms. Dubin, it's awesome in there. I mean, you just, all the resources and opportunities are available there, but I think that continuing to improve that would be very, it would be very beneficial to students and that'd be awesome. And to finish off, I just wanted to remind all students to feel free to contact me through the BHUSD website. Any questions, comments, concerns, anything? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, moving on to business and finance. I need a motion for item...
I move to reject claim number 573649.
So moved.
I need a second?
I did.
Is that a second?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. Moved by Mr. Spitz, seconded by Ms. Hacker. Any questions? Nope. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries for, oh, planning and facilities.
I will make a motion to approve 12A, ratification of amendment number four to the agreement with King Office Services to provide relocation and storage services at El Rodeo School.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions? We do have Jeff and Jeff here tonight, so.
No questions.
Okay.
No questions.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Item 12B?
Move approval of amendment number five of the agreement with King Office Services to provide relocation and storage services for El Rodeo School.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Spitz, seconded by Mrs. Hacker. Any questions on that one? I will say, sometimes I bring this up occasionally, that my colleagues have asked a lot of terrific questions on the board agenda items of staff and we're given the answers, so we know what questions both ourselves and other people are asking. And staff does a pretty thorough job of getting those answers before the meeting. There were questions about these amendments to the relocation services which are budgeted and, because, so less people think that this is just additional money being spent, it's all part of the construction budget. Okay, that being said, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. And item C.
I will move for item 12C to ratification of amendment number three to the agreement for asbestos and lead abatement monitoring services with the environmental audit incorporation at El Rodeo School.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus and Mr. Spitz. Any questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. And communication from board members.
I hope everyone has a restful Labor Day weekend.
I second that.
Thank you.
I'm going to celebrate the 70th anniversary of my 13th Bar Mitzvah at 13 next week.
Mazel tov.
You can figure that one out.
Yes. I already bought you a pen and a savings bond. Thank you. Ms. Hacker?
Just wanted to, I don't see it on here, the future meetings. We have a study session, I believe, on September...
Fourth.
Fourth, at 4:00 PM.
Yes.
At the district office, correct?
Yes.
Not here?
Yes.
And we also have the OOL plugging update tomorrow with the city and the school district at Las Iniguitas Park at 7:30, correct?
Seven, I think.
Seven or seven? Seven, I'm sorry. Seven.
Can I just say something? Mr. Spitz just thought that that meant a different number. He was looking at a different number.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Mr. Prowman, I wanted to just ask you, because I think this had come up at the PTSA meeting at the high school, but the exposed brick over at B4 that we discovered when we washed everything off, this gorgeous exposed brick, which in, looking at the photos from your presentation, I noticed that the brick is on the inside of the choir room as well. So, I just, all I wanted to do was simply ask, because it kind of came up in a public forum and I noticed that the brick was inside, is that the same brick or is there something in between those two layers of brick from the inside of the choir room and the outside? And then, it was like, and then, can we get an update on that as soon as we know something?
Yes. I assume that that exposed brick in the background of that photograph is something the district may be interested in keeping as a final facade of the interior as well as the exterior.
Yes.
I know we have planned a furring wall on the inside of that wall to run electrical data and other systems in the building, in the particular teaching space, but we can definitely look at, see if there's other alternatives to run those data, electrical ports and possibly utilize the existing brick as the interior facade. And we'll keep you updated on the exterior as well. Again, that was in the last two weeks as we uncovered that exterior and saw that its condition was much better than expected, to incorporate that into the final exterior facade.
Okay, that's terrific. I'm looking forward to that. Thank you for saying something. And with that, the meeting is adjourned. Good night, everybody.